Whenever you're ready, your worship.
All right. Thank you very much. Well, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Township of Georgia Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, October 12th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 1:01 PM. And in the spirit of reconciliation, we wish to acknowledge the recurring relationships between indigenous peoples and the territories they traditionally occupied. We recognize and deeply appreciate the historic connection they have to this place. The land, the water, the sky, and all that live on, in, and above it. We are grateful for the opportunity to meet here, and we thank all the generations of indigenous peoples who have taken care of this place and who continue to care for it. And we want to show our respect. Hundreds of years after the first treaties were signed, they remain relevant today as the guide our decisions and our actions. We commit to learn, to educate, to honor sacred places, and to take action towards real truth and reconciliation. My words. Council, any declarations of pecuniary interest? All right, then, I will proceed. I have moved by Counselor Jarvis, second line by Counselor Cooper. It resolved that Committee of the Whole adopt the agenda of October 12th, 2022, as circulated. Any comments, questions? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Our next on our agenda is open forum. Did I understand that we may have Mr. Santoro for open forum?
That is correct. I'll bring him over.
Thank you.
Connectivity seems to be slow today.
Weather might be a factor.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
You are, you've asked to speak in open forum, as you know, technically, that's a two-minute limit. You'll barely say hello in those two minutes, I suspect. So I think council will indulge you to go to five minutes, but please keep your remarks as brief as possible, because I'd also hope that following your remarks, we're going to be talking about the during grain situation. If you could stay with us, then perhaps if anybody had any questions, you'd be able to answer them.
Very good. Thank you. I appreciate, I appreciate the extra time, and I will try to be brief. Okay.
Oh.
Thank you. Mayor Kocetier and members of council. My name is Vince Santoro. I reside within the Lakeview subdivision, registered plan M468. I wish to comment on the staff report dealing with the Haskett Drive drainage complaint. In addition to presenting myself, please recognize I am also speaking on behalf of five of my neighbors, all lot owners within the Lakeview subdivision. For a second time, the staff report identifies the township has no legal duty to address the drainage issue within the subdivision under the Ontario Planning Act. The first time this opinion was identified, there was no supporting documentation provided. This time, the reasoning appears to be these lands should be considered private lands because the township has no records regarding the development of this subdivision, and the township did not exist in 1970 when this subdivision was registered. Does this mean the township or even the district can abdicate its role for surface water drainage management in all subdivisions registered prior to 1971? In my view, it shouldn't. In the second paragraph on page two, the report states, if the drainage plan was required as part of the planning approval process, and it was if, this information is no longer available. Respectfully, it is available. An archived copy of the 1970 Ontario Planning Act is available online where, where the responsibilities are identified. Like today, the Ontario Planning Act in 1970 directed a developer to provide public lands to the municipality within the subdivision, to provide first, secured road access to all private lands, the road. Second, a means to provide access to all utilities to, to all private lands, and third, a means to drain all private lands of surface water. With suspected drainage, the act goes further advising a lot drainage plan be developed and implemented by the developer, private to public lands being assumed by the municipality, and this is for the protection of the municipality. Further, it is our position that failing to follow the direction of the Ontario Planning Act or failing to maintain records could be construed as negligence, and negligence is not grounds for abdicating accountability. We contend there are several errors of fact made in this report. Because of my time allotment is short, I will only identify one. Both in the first report and again in the last paragraph on page one of this report, it is identified, and I quote, "The complainant has indicated water moving from off-property wetlands through the subdivision is creating the drainage issue on his property." For the record, this is not true. I can produce letters to staff where I state the water flowing onto my property originates from within the subdivision and enters directly onto my property from the township's property, namely the road allowance. In addition, the topographical drainage survey of the subdivision and surrounding area was completed. It identified the majority in excess of 90% of the surface water originates from within the subdivision. Why has staff not issued this topographical survey to, pardon me, why has staff not used this topographical survey to determine the true source of the, the surface water and included in this report? Through the mayor to the township's solicitor. Option two and three suggest using different sections of the Drainage Act to develop a drainage plan. Is my experience, this act is normally used in rural territory for large private parcels of land or between two municipal agencies or governments to manage drainage at or near their joint boundary. I understand it is not normally applicable for the resolution of drainage issues within a registered subdivision, especially an M-registered subdivision. Could it be Mr. Pickfield being erroneously informed that water is moving from off-property wetland through the subdivision? And given that all land adjacent to this subdivision is crown land, in other words, owned by another agency? Was he thus influenced to suggest the Drainage Act be used in options two and three? Knowing now that the surface water originates within the subdivision and not crown land, does he continue to support this position? To summarize, we have disputed the reports supporting evidence for the opinion the township is not accountable for the drainage within this registered M-subdivision. The topographical drainage service commissioned by the township disproves the report's assertion the surface water originates from off-property wetland. We wish to add, there is a third drainage plan for managing the drainage of surface water within the subdivision, discussed with Mr. Sackatch, So-Catch, pardon me, but it failed to be included in this report. Consequently, we do not support any of the three recommendations being proposed for consideration by council today. Mayor Kocetier, back in December 2021, when this issue first came to council, you made a very significant statement. Paraphrasing, you identified you were aware of many drainage problems within the township that neighbors have satisfactorily dealt with without the township's involvement. You ran on to suggest we neighbors should consider managing this drainage problem ourselves. I have a question for you, your fellow council members and staff. Do you consider the township to be our neighbor? We do. Township is the largest landowner in the subdivision, owning over four acres adjacent to every property owner in the subdivision. We feel this third drainage plan is doable, is significantly more economical than the two drainage designs Tatham Engineering proposed, and deserves your consideration. To this end, and in the spirit of all of us being good neighbors, we six constituents request council direct staff to develop this third drainage plan collegially with us, and I stress that collegially with us, not for us, then have this plan return to council for discussion, comparison, and support. Thank you for your time.
Sorry, that couldn't get myself unmuted. Thank you very much for that presentation, those, those questions, and I'm sure some of the answers will may or may not come up in our discussion to follow. I know that Mr. So-Cash is not on screen. I believe he's still under the weather. I don't know, Mr. Mariotti, if you're going to present in his absence, or I see Mr. Pickfield has lit up. Do we go straight to legal counsel?
If I may, I will try and sub in for, for Mr. So-Cash, although I'm not very familiar with, with the file, and I just want to, in, in terms of, yes, Mr. Pickfield is, is definitely available. However, we really want to focus the discussion on, on how to try and address the issue as opposed to legal aspects. If, if there's any discussions that turn on legal implications or any of that sort, then we do have to go into closed.
Okay, thank you. Um, so at this point, you're turning it over to council to start asking questions. Is that our approach, given that Mr. So-Cash isn't going to make a presentation, or?
Yeah, I mean, if, if I may just kind of add to, you know, from a very kind of 30,000-foot level, because again, I'm not, you know, very familiar with the, with the file. From what my understanding is, you know, staff came back with a report to council back in December 2021, basically with recommendations saying that, you know, we, we, you know, the township is basically a parcel lot owner, like, like the other residents of, of the area. And so, you know, there's really, the subdivision was created before the township, it was, it was created through the, the MNR. And so really, there, there, there is no, you know, there's no other activity really from, from our end, other than being a partner and trying to resolve the issue. And at that time, council director staff to go back and have, have a look again at what's, you know, what, what can be done, and this is what staff has done. They, they actually retain Mr. Pickfield as a, as a secondary backup as to, okay, what's the, what's the situation here? And, and hence the report as to the options and the recommendation of following option one. And on top of that, staff did reach out to Tatham Engineering for, well, first of all, we did a topographical survey and asked of an engineering firm to come up with a couple of, a couple of solutions. I'm not, I'm not sure if Mr. Santori, if you had discussed your third option with, with Mr. So-Cash, that I'm not, I'm not familiar with.
I did. In fact, we had several discussions with respect to this alternative. Because it was all in intention of working together as partners. Okay, and quite frankly, it was extremely less expensive than either the other two alternatives.
Mr. Mayor, I can add a few things to what I said, sure. So, I mean, the background of this is important to understand. The point that, that Mr. Mariotti made about the fact that this was a planning approval which occurred in 1970, and it was the province who approved it. So the township doesn't have, didn't have an approval hand in all of this. It was approved by the province, this particular subdivision. I think that's an important context point. And we don't have any information about what, at the time of approval, what was required in terms of drainage plans, et cetera, for this subdivision, because it is within the provincial jurisdiction, and the township doesn't have access to those files. The township staff did go and look and tried to make a search of, of getting as much information as they could. But in doing that, they found out from the province that the files no longer exist. So we're stuck with that situation in terms of going back in history. But I wanted to just comment briefly on a couple of points that were made by Mr. Santori, who's thought very carefully about this issue and has a good understanding, and has presented a drainage plan. The, the, the things that really is important to stress is that this is no longer a matter under the Planning Act. The Planning Act is a piece of legislation which involves planning approvals. It doesn't address issues after all those planning approvals are in place. But there is a piece of legislation that does address that issue, and that's the Drainage Act. And yes, I have, I, I acknowledge and experience of cases where the Drainage Act has been applied to subdivisions, can be applied to subdivisions as well as any existing registered subdivisions. It can be replied on rural lands as well as urban lands. It's often most commonly done on, in rural area, used in rural areas. But that is not because it can't be used in these circumstances with an existing subdivision. And it may not be used often for plans of subdivision or registered subdivisions because they're usually in a more urbanized setting than this, and they're usually, and usually involve, you know, infrastructure that's in place, that is, 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 that covers the issues related to drainage that is dedicated to the municipality, and then the municipality has obligations around stormwater management in those cases. This is a different kind of subdivision. It's a very much a rural subdivision, which is, does not have those pieces in place. There is a municipal road allowance, so I agree with Mr. Santoro that as a property owner, the municipality has obligations around drainage for those lands that are within that subdivision. But again, those issues are sorted out through the Drainage Act, and I, 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 I'm going to, that's all I'm going to say about it right now. But the Drainage Act provides, in my view, the absolute perfect mechanism to address this issue. And because it provides for a, an engineer to be appointed by the municipality who's qualified in ensuring, and he can look at the, the plans, and I, and I understand the plan has also been, conceptual plan's also been developed by an engineer that was from the municipality generally, the municipality talked to as well as Mr. Santoro. But it's that objective municipal engineer, and very much on the Drainage Act is an objective person who looks at this and comes up with the best solution, and the, the municipal engineer also has the responsibility for determining based on well-established principles, how much should be the responsibility of each landowner in terms of paying the cost of it, including the municipality, who may be responsible for a substantial portion, we don't know. So I'm suggesting what has to happen here is a process under the Drainage Act, which is designed for this exact purpose.
All right. Thank you very much. Um. Counsel, I think I'm going to turn it over to council now and see if anybody has any questions, suggestions, ideas, and we'll, we'll sort of work from there. This is because this is a committee of the whole, we can be a little bit more relaxed in the conversation, and we're going to start with Council Reinko.
Yeah, it would have been nice if Counselor Bocheck could have been here this afternoon, because he's probably a little closer to the issue than I am, but I, I think there has to be a compromise here between the landowners and the township. I think we need to look at this third option that Mr. Santoro has had mentioned. Maybe we can do that with our own staff or with Tatum and so on. Look at that option and see if that's viable. I do agree with Mr. Pickford that I think it's one of these projects where there's going to be pain on both sides. And, and I think when it comes to the financial part of it, I think that's where the pain's going to be, because I don't want to get into approving, and the report's got $200,000 to $300,000. I'm not in that kind of position to kind of support that, but I am, would be supportive of a joint budget here between the landowners and the township. I guess my question is to, and I don't know it would be to CAO or Mr. Pickford, is that who is going to lead this particular drainage request to the provincial government? I don't think it's fair to leave the landowners or, or Mr. Stistano should take the lead on that. I think it should be the Tatum or our own people leading this thing, if that's the option we, we choose. So I'm just trying to find out who would be the lead here, and, and if, if we can just review this third option before we go too far.
Thank you. Certainly.
Sorry if I.
People move around on me, sir, but.
Just, just to answer to, to that question, we, we, we have to remind ourselves that we, we are landowners, no different than the other properties and that subdivision, essentially. We, we, we start to take over control and, and ownership of something like this. It, it then opens up a whole bunch of other issues for us, not just for this subdivision, but, but for other subdivisions. So I totally agree that we, we're in this, in this together as owners of lands there. The subdivision was created, as, as Mr. Pickfield has, has mentioned already, prior to the township, prior to any involvement of ours. I understand that even as we speak, there are some private lands that have been modified of their own accord that are potentially adding additional strain to, to, to the drainage issues. So my, my recommendation goes with the report is that, is that we go with option one, and, and we will follow as a, as, as, as a land member together with all the other members.
Thank you. Mr. Pickfield.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that, to try to respond to Counselor's question that the, the Drainage Act is a self-help piece of legislation in the sense that it, and it's user-friendly. It's somewhat user-friendly in the sense that all it really requires is for the property owners who are interested in addressing the drainage issue to come together and, and bring forward a petition. And the, and staff can be of assistance sort of in, in, in allowing that to happen, and that just triggers the process. And then the process then moves to council deciding whether or not they're going to accept the petition based on a preliminary report from a drainage engineer. And so they'll have to, they would have to, as a first step, appoint an engineer to, who would be a sort of the objective voice in reviewing this matter. And that drainage engineer would then be responsible for putting together the design for the drainage system. You know, if, if, if it proceeds, if council decides to proceed on this way under the Drainage Act, then the spill engineer decides on, on the design, the construction, the operation, and the long-term maintenance and how that is done. And then once it becomes a municipal drain, then there's a system, and then the municipality would be responsible also for maintaining the municipal drain. So, and then also there would be, there would be, again, the, the benefiting owners, which include the municipality, would be responsible for the funding of all of that. So it is really, in, you know, my submission, it's a, it's a, it's not a process that involves the province at all. It's a province, it's a, it's a very local process that applies the correct expertise to resolve the issue and get the right plan in place. We already have two plans that are being proposed. I don't profess, and I don't, I don't know if anybody on staff could profess to, to, to have the expertise to decide what, what the, the plan should be, but a municipal engineer who's qualified and doesn't have any, any particular bias, et cetera, is the one that the act provides would, would, would provide that proposal. And the other thing about the Drainage Act is if there's disagreement along the way, there's also a process of, of appeal. If, if the, and it doesn't happen that often, because usually the parties work together, because they're all trying to find a solution. But there is an opportunity to appeal it to a drainage tribunal and to a drainage referee. So it's, the process really sets out something that is perfect for this situation, in my view.
Yeah, get back to my question. Who, who actually pays for all this? Who pays for the engineer? Who pays for the construction and so on?
So that's paid for in the end by the benefiting property owners. So, so those could be, that wouldn't be potentially the municipality, because they have lands that are potentially benefiting, they are part of the drainage issue, and the other property owners who would, who, who would benefit from it. So that's who would pay for.
All right. Let's go to Counselor Jarvis, followed by Counselor Cooper, and then Mr. Santoro.
Yes, under the initial impression, we're sort of taking a do-nothing approach, but I'd like the idea that we should be, become sort of part of the solution to this and in the context of helping advise and work with the residents group on this. I do have a question, though, and maybe Mr. Santori can help me on this. This came to us not that long ago, but that development, the development seems to be causing the issues was proposed and approved back in 1970. How long has this drainage issue, this drainage thing been an issue for, for you and your fellow property owners?
Um, thank you for that. When I, there's always been, and there's always been a requirement for water, surface water to drain down to the lake. Okay. The issue started to happen about, I'm going to say four years ago, but now it's five years ago, because this issue's been around for a couple of years. With the development of land, a couple of the lots that were not developed. The original developer of the land, the owner, chose to keep half the lots back in 1970, 71, 72. He sold half of them, and the rest have just sold recently, and there's still two more vacant lands to be developed. And the issue is that these lands being developed, and when I say developed, I mean driveways putting in that, that have been approved by the municipality. In other words, we're taking lands that would have normally retained water, water retention, are now gravel parking lots and, or driveways that do not hold water anymore. Okay, that's the first thing. Buildings have been placed, so the roofs drain very quickly. And the unfortunate part is two-thirds of all these lots drain to the rear as opposed to down to the lake because of the topography. And so that's, so the quick answer is it's only been four years, or five years, that what has happened from the past to this, to current situation is the intensity of the flow of the water. In the past, water, the spring water, would be retained in the swamp that are now partly roads and buildings, et cetera. Okay? And now they drain within hours. And now they drain within hours. Because culvers have been placed, ditches have been built. Because individual property owners have been managing their property. And this is something that concerns me. Mr. Pritchard. You probably don't know it, I'm a municipal engineer by, by education, and I've, I've, I've designed subdivisions. So that's why I have a little bit of knowledge, but my knowledge is twenty, thirty years old. My understanding is, within a subdivision, even this rural subdivision. Every property owner has a right to drain their property off their property, but they have no right to drain their property onto another private property. Their only right is to pry, to push their water onto public lands. And you call this a rural subdivision, you know, a division of a parcel of land? And I'm not aware that, that that requirement is any different because of that.
And can we let Mr. Pickfield respond to that, because I think that's an important question. Is, can an individual property owner drain their lands onto neighboring public lands? And then what qualifies as public lands?
Well. An individual could drain his lands onto an improved municipal road. Potentially, if, but even, but, but this is a, we're talking about here. On, just simply an unimproved, unimproved road allowance. So it's really, the municipality's in no different position legally than any other private property owner. In terms of, you can't just, it would do no good to drain, to drain the land onto an unimproved road. A road allowance, that's not going to solve the drainage problem. And there's no legal, there's no legal ability to do that, because. So I, and I think that this is the reason why you need a Drainage Act is because you have private property owners. Whose lands are unimproved generally, they don't have infrastructure on it to systematically deal with the drainage. You need something that will allow for an overall drainage works to be established. In, on those lands, and the only mechanism available for that is under the Drainage Act. And as I say, I said it a couple of times, it works very well.
No, because I guess my concern, and, and it is simply that what I'm hearing. Is that in, in recent years, new landowners have been affecting the drainage of water. They're draining the water off their lands. And some of that water eventually ends, lands on Mr. Santoro's lands.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering about the legality of that. I mean, if, can a neighbor? Does a neighbor have a right to change the drainage on their lands so that affects their neighbor?
No, no, they don't have a, they don't have a right to do that, and that's why this gets into situations where you have potential. You have potential liabilities and issues amongst neighbors related to these issues. But I don't think that's, that, I don't think that is the way to think of this problem. As who's got response, who can, who has a right to, to drain land onto one's property or another property? The only way to solve a problem like this is through an engineering solution. That is established for, through a drainage works and, and have the property owners all involved in it. And that's what the Drainage Act process provides for. If you, you start worrying about. Well, you start suing each other in terms of private liability issues on these types of issues. Nothing gets solved. The courts aren't in a position to solve issues like this.
I, I asked a question simply because, and I'm gonna go to Counselor Cooper in a moment, but I asked a question simply because. To me, the township is, has not caused the problem, so the township should not be the sole solution to the problem.
That's right. The, the, that's exactly right. I mean, the, the township is not a. The township is not necessarily going to be, we don't know what contribution the township would have to pay to the solution of this. Until it gets proper expertise to determine what's the, what the solution should be and who's, who's to receive the benefits. And there's a, as I said, there's a pretty well-established process and methodology to determine those things.
Through your worship, you're, you're gonna have to start by forgiving me, because I did take my drainage course. Which was a two-week endeavor back in twenty eighteen, so I am a bit rusty. However, I can maybe demonstrate how the drainage process works. And the reason a treasurer would need to get involved is because the billing to property owners and the different shares is very complex. And you have to understand the drainage process to understand how to do the billing. But I, I think I got a picture that I just found on Google that might help address how watersheds work. And how the abutting property owners and who pays. If you would like me to demonstrate, would take maybe two or three minutes.
You got three minutes?
Sure.
Plus tech time?
Plus tech time. So this is a municipal drain system. So in this particular system, there are three watersheds. The watersheds are identified in the yellow. And then the contour lines are put on the map to show the water flow into the watershed. So any work done on the little veins, if I may, let's see if I can circle a little vein.
Can you make it bigger, Joe?
I can certainly try.
The little ones would be the blue, wouldn't they?
The, the little ones would be the little blues. Let me see if I can highlight in yellow. So let, this would be a little one, for example. So the billing for this little one would be shared by all the abutting properties who share this vein. However, if work is being done on a bigger vein. For example, let me take a black pen here. For example, if, if work is being done on this area here, for example. All of the upstream property owners share the billing for that. So what happens is we, the township, so there is first a petition. The petition is signed by all of the property owners in the watershed, saying they want a registered municipal drain. Then, then the township hires an engineer who is a drainage engineer. They went to school for this, to establish this picture, the drawings, and the abutting property owners. And, and sometimes. For example, might be something like this. So their share of the drainage work on this little black parcel here would, would be here and here and here. So the actual proportionment of the municipal drain work is very difficult and very complex. But, but in the end, it's a very, like, like Mr. Pickfield has mentioned, it's a very fair process. And you can assure collection, because all of the people who signed. When does the, when does the municipality pay its share? Well, the municipality might have a piece of land that would be located, for example, here. And therefore that apportionment on this work would be established to the, to the township.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. I'm gonna go to Counselor Cooper now, he's been waiting.
Thank you, Mayor, and it's a good thing I'm not impatient. Kind of kidding. I just want to back up a bit here, and I, I, please don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Santoro, but why does the township want to do anything?
May I answer that?
Please.
Well, no, I'm, I'm asking our legal and our CAO. I was just saying, I'm sorry, but I just want to ask this question, and that is. Why do we do anything? A, and then I've got a couple more questions following that. Just because we own some road allowance. So. Who would like to answer that?
Let's go to Mr. Pickfield, he's the most legally qualified.
You have no obligation to do anything in these circumstances. In my, you have no obligation to do anything at this point. But you may want to be proactive, because there are lands within the, within a subdivision that are having drainage issues. Could be affecting your lands also. And, but I wouldn't do anything. You don't have an obligation, and I, you know, we provided a legal opinion, a written legal opinion to the municipality. You know, which after, with some research, that supported that there, there are no legal obligations on the municipality under statute. Or in civil law, we, there's no real, there's no obligations on you to address this issue. But there may, it may be prudent and also, you know, useful, given, given the relationship with Mr. Santoro. To, to provide some support, facilitate some solutions here. And as I, and you know, the Drainage Act is a, is a, is a kind of a no-brainer in terms of the solution. It does involve. You know, it does involve some effort on behalf of the municipality for certain to be, to, to, in terms of using that. But it also provides a fair means to share the costs associated with it, so.
So, so thank you for that, and, and I, I understand what you said. And we could help facilitate, I'm not sure, taking on financial responsibility. Because where's, the other thing that comes to me is where's the loss? We're talking about road, road allowance, or, yes, road allowance. And does it have much value, if any value, and, and where are we impacted? I just want to make sure that, you said we're not, but even a depreciation of that land, what would we be doing with it anyway?
Yeah, you wouldn't be doing anything. I, as I said, I don't, there's no legal obligation, there's no necessarily any economic case that can be made. To, to, to assist in this. It's, it's an issue that's come to the municipality's attention, and a complaint's been registered. And there is a drainage issue, we've done, already dedicated some resources to it, to, to study the problem. We have a good idea of what's involved, we even kind of have sort of a ballpark of what it would, what it would cost to address the issue and resolve it. From, but, but I think you've gone, you've gone quite a ways to assist in this already as a municipality. But there is a self-help piece of legislation that's available to the residents, and what the staff report says is. Direct them to that and say, use that. If you want to solve this problem, you want to solve this problem, you have a legal mechanism. You have the Drainage Act. It, it's what this is, it's the reason this legislation was passed. So instead of asking a municipality for, you know, to, to be in, to, to, to open the coffers and try and solve the problem. Solve it through a fair and equitable process, and quite frankly, municipality may have, have to pay some money associated with that. Because they have lands within this subdivision.
Right, if they care. So that, that was sort of the first question, but.
But, but I should say, Counselor Cooper, that if the landowners want to initiate this petition process, they have a right to do so, and it triggers that process.
Okay, fair enough. What about the approval, the approving body, the province? You're, you indicated the province can say, too bad, and so sad, we're not, we're not involved, even though they approved it. Is that correct?
No, I'm not giving you any, I'm not giving you any legal advice on the liability of the province on this. I, I didn't, I, I'm, I don't, I don't act for the province. I act for this municipality. And this municipality doesn't have any, have, have any, in my opinion, doesn't have any statutory. Or civil liability or obligations related to this matter. If you wanted to know what the province's liability is on this. Yeah, you, that's a different issue, and I, I suggest it's, it's really something that the province, someone should approach the province on, so.
Should we not do that?
We could, we could ask the province to look into the issue. We've already gone to the province to try to get information. We could write to the province and say, you know, could you look into what, what's this, what, you know, in a more formal way? With, give us information on the, on this approval process. Possibly.
Thank you, Peter.
I'm not sure what it would do, but it's a possibility.
Counselor Douglas, I think I saw your hand before.
Actually, Mr. Pickfield answered the question in regards to the Drainage Act going. Having the, the property owners look into that directly to, to start a process. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Mrs. Santoro, did you have a remark you wanted?
Well, I, yeah, some comments. First, Mr. Pritchard, Pickfield identified that this property was a parcel of land. And so should still be treated like a parcel of land. I would qualify that and suggest that, under common law. A parcel, it could be, the whole subdivision could be treated as a parcel of land. And the demonstration that was put forward there. Basically was based on common law of the, the drain, the catchment basins as they line up, going up the hill, if you will. Okay, and that's, and that's been an argument I've had for some time, and is that. And I, I guess I differ in the approach that Mr. Pickfield says. That the, the subdivision, once it's developed, okay, because. And approved, I can go into local municipalities, I haven't looked in, in here, but I can go into Midland. I know of one in Midland, for example, where the road was not developed. Well, that's a choice you make. The, the requirement was, by the act, that the, the lots have to be provided with access, okay? Not necessarily road, in some cases their water access, but not in a, an M-plan. There are different types of plans for water access subdivision, but for an M-plan subdivision. There has to be road access into each and every property. Another situation, for example. If the, the utilities, okay? I don't know if you're aware, but the utilities within this subdivision are not on the road allowance, they're on private lands. And what I know for my own personal property, and I suspect for all the properties here. The utilities have no easements, no register or non-registered easement on my property. So if the township can do what they want with that property, then it handcuffs everyone. The, the issue I find is. The, back when, when nineteen seventy, when the township was developed. It, it wasn't implemented properly. Now, I, I disagree that the township, it's not the township, whoever was, the unorganized township at the time, before we became organized. Had a role to play. The Ontario government didn't come up and it doesn't go out and look in every subdivision. It sends out notes. It sends out notes to Ontario Hydro, to Bell, all the utilities, okay? And asks them, what do they need? Now I happen again to be a retired Bell employee, and I had the right-of-way department for Ontario at one point in time. And so we would get every single subdivision, and whether we wanted an easement or not. We would take one. Why? Because they're free.
Mr. Santoro, I think we're getting off topic, because we're not talking about utilities or Bell or anything else. We're talking about drainage that has become a problem in the last four or five years.
Yeah, but the, the point being is. All of a sudden, it, it's, it's an M-plan, there was accountabilities to be taken, and it's being suggested that. Because it wasn't developed, you own the land. Without any accountability. How do, how do the landlocked parcels of land drain? If they don't drain onto someone else's property? Then do we, 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 do we apply common law principles to each and every lot? Because unfortunately.
Okay, Mr. Santoro, again, I'm trying to keep this discussion to how we respond to this particular situation.
Okay.
In this particular situation. You've told us you've had a drainage issue of the last four or five years.
Yeah.
Based predominantly on changes to lots next door to you or a couple doors down. And how they've changed their drainage, and that's the situation we're trying to address. And how they've changed their drainage. And that's the situation we're trying to address.
That's a good point. My, my, uh, okay, let's put it this way. You make a good point that way. The, what? There's a couple of preferences we could have here, okay? And I'll just deal with mine because there's. We, we are.
Mr. Santoro, again, I do not want this discussion to go all afternoon and maybe I'm sounding impatient. But I do not want this conversation to go all afternoon. We have to come up with a, we as council are gonna make recommendations to our staff.
Okay. There, there's, there's two solutions there. Okay, there's two solutions, okay? I mentioned, there's an option three. Okay, that requires a backhoe. And access to, to your private lands, okay? And we can direct the water. And, and, and introduce mitigation. In other words. Uh, uh, use one of the roads as a bit of a dike, have an undersized pipe. So when it rains. Right now, we have, say, in simple terms, we have a large pipe, say, a, a one foot diameter pipe. When it rains, the water flows completely and quickly through. Instead, you have a four inch pipe. And so the water then would mitigate for three or four days and the flow would be. Regulated so that it doesn't erode soil into the lake. That's one solution and it's the one I would prefer we go to, okay? And it is not expensive. And as far as maintenance goes, it wouldn't be hard to maintain even locally amongst ourselves. In other words, it's our lands and we're looking after it. And, and the municipality doesn't have to be involved. Another alternative I have, and it was just be me. Is I could landscape my property such that the water from your property doesn't come onto my property. And I'm saying your private lands, the municipality's property doesn't come out. I asked my lawyer for some advice, you know, not that I'm going there because I don't have any intention to go there. But he said, Vince. The, very simply, he says, drainage issues are very expensive. And difficult to get through. And that's why the Drainage Act. Causes a lot of expense. He says, if I were you, I would just buy a couple of truckloads of fill and landscape your property so that it's higher. Then the township property and the water doesn't flow. That's not being neighborly. Okay, that's acting on my own. Okay, I've had neighbors who've acted on their own in good faith because they didn't realize what was going to happen. So I'm trying to act with the township and say, here's how I put it to Mr. Soak, Jack. I said. Loan it, loan us two people in a backhoe, okay? And I, I'm a designer engineer. I can design that very easily. And we can do it for a little money. So question to you, I'll throw a question back at you. And counsel, how much are you prepared to pay for this to go away? Like it's ten thousand, twenty thousand, like you don't wanna spend two hundred to three hundred thousand, neither do I want you to. It's my tax dollars too. So what's a reasonable amount? What would be a reasonable contribution? And. We would, we would provide our own labor, uh, and et cetera, et cetera. In other words, to your point that you made back in December. We would work together to solve the pro- problem locally and at any time that local idea breaks down. You have every right to start the procedure using the, the.
Okay, I mean, and, and I think what we've heard from our lawyer is the Drainage Act is a, a vehicle in which the neighbors. Can cooperate with each other and the township. Um, I'm gonna go to Counselor Jarvis.
But we don't have to use it, is my point. That's all.
No.
Thank you.
Counselor Jarvis.
You have a question and it may result in a further question. Just, uh, obviously some, uh, residences have been built within the last four or five years and that's. Conceivably, uh, caused the issues that we're dealing with today. Would, would the, the township have had any? Um, say in those, considering it's a, it's a. A development, would we've had any, uh, been any approval process through the township for those buildings in the first place?
Good question.
The, the buildings would have required building permits. I'm not sure with regards to the.
And, and the dri- and the driveways, the driveways had to get a permit.
You have to be recognized by the chair. That's part of the rules.
I apologize.
Yeah, well, that would be actually, he's, he's, he's asked my questions. Uh, thank you very much, Vince. Um, the question is, did we approve? Those buildings with the drainage that came with them? And if so, do we not have a moral responsibility, if not a statutory one, to correct an error that we were a part, a part of making?
I think that's something we can ask staff to get back to us on if they answer right away.
Yeah, I, I can, I can check with staff. I mean, it, I'm not familiar with the. Whether, um. The driveways themselves connect to a private, uh, you know, a private stretch of road. Uh, or if those driveways connect to a municipally, uh, owned road. That's, that's, uh.
Municipal. Goes to Haskett's right.
Yeah, but I, I think there, there's, there's two issues here. One issue is the connection to the municipal road. The second issue is. At where the lane itself goes. And I, I know that in the past I've heard from staff, again, this is the past, as long as it doesn't affect drainage or the lay of the land. You could create a lane. On this case, it clearly affected drainage.
Yeah.
Correct.
So. Um, I think that's one thing to look into, but I also think that's part of. I, I wouldn't be surprised, uh, speaking on, for myself, but probably for many of the counselors here. We would love to see a good neighborly solution to this problem, getting the, getting the. The half dozen or so neighbors that are involved and including the township as one of the off-state neighbors. To sit down and say, okay, what is a good practical? Solution for everyone. And whether or not we require the, the formality of the Drainage Act or not. That would be based on the, I'll call it the initial meeting, because we could have the issue. That half the neighbors may not wanna be involved. Even though they need to be part of the solution. I don't know. But I think that's, that's, that's. To me, an important step. I'm not gonna go to Counselor Douglas, because I see the, the hand raised this time, followed by Counselor Hazelton, please.
Thank you. Uh, you brought one of the points up I was going to, um, bring up and that is if you don't have all the neighbors on side. Where do you go with that? That's one thing to consider. The other thing is, and I'm just wondering, where's the developer of the subdivision? In all of this, I haven't heard Mr. Santoro actually speak of him. Or her, or corporation.
Deceased.
That's a problem. Thank you.
Counselor Hazelton.
Yeah, I, I like, um, the community involvement idea. Uh, I've seen it work effectively in the past. Um, I think it's sad that we don't have the option that, uh, Mr. Santoro discussed with, uh, Brad. Um, we don't have that available for review and discussion today, but it sounds to me like. That could be, um, a, um. Uh, an informal solution to the problem. Uh, the Drainage Act is probably the next step, but as a more formal solution to the problem. Um, I would be a fan of, um. Hearing about, uh. The informal, uh, solution that, uh, Mr. Santoro and, uh, Brad had discussed. Uh, to see if that, uh, could be made to work. It sounds like that could be the least. Expensive path for everyone and, um. Uh, the fact that we don't have that, uh, to discuss and review today. Causes me to think that we, we don't have a full. Uh, a full view of the options available, so, um, that's something I would prefer to, to hear. Thank you.
All right, I mean, this is a. A, a cow meeting, a committee of the whole, and therefore we're not, we're gonna reach a final solution. But I, I do think in my mind, right now, there are two. Pieces missing. One is, as Counselor Hazelton has, has pointed out, is that. There, this third solution, this, the four inch drain versus the one foot culvert, or what, whatever you wanna call it. Uh, we don't have that in front of us. We don't have. I don't know if the engineers that were hired or, or had that even on their table to consider, and I think it'd be worthwhile to consider that. And the second thing. Is I would like to hear from all the neighbors. Directly. Their willingness to enter into a, um. A group discussion, informal initially, a group discussion about the situation we face. And possible resolutions. And I think, I believe. And, and counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the township would be quite willing to be at that table. As one of the, call it neighbors. Because we are one of the landowners in the area. Yeah, Mr. Pickfield.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, there is nothing, uh, stopping and it, it, off, uh, the Drainage Act is a formalized solution. And there is no. Uh, no difficulties from a, from, uh, from my point of view with the residents getting together and. Discussing with the township, one of the landowners, how to, how to, how to get through this problem. The problem with just taking one landowner's solution though. Uh, and, and maybe a very good solution, but i- i- if it affects other landowners. Then they should be at the table too. So that's why we need to sort of make sure we have all the people at the table. And I think it's very sensible. Uh, to have that meeting before we make any decisions because. Even if you wanted to move ahead with the petition under the Drainage Act, you'd have to have that agreement in any event. So before, before, and you may not need to go through the Drainage Act if you can get consensus around the table about how to solve the problem. So maybe that's the, I, I think that is a very sensible first step.
Mrs. Santoro.
Please, thank you. First of all. Uh, we have had. Those meetings with Mr. Soak, okay? We haven't, all six of us been here at the same time because of. People, most people work. I have attended all of them because I am retired. And we have developed, we, we have developed a solution. He has drawings, okay? I have had several meetings with everyone. We've, 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 we've developed a consensus. Of, um. Of, of this plan. In other words. Uh, Mr. Pe- Pick. And Mr. Perkfield identified, or, or somebody identified that we shouldn't be meeting, we should, you would like to meet with everybody. We've done that and we have consensus, okay? We have to fine tune a few things, okay? But the general design of it. Is understood. Mr. Soak has a drawing.
Okay, so produced as well. I think, I think the shortcoming, one of the shortcomings in our discussion today. Is the fact that Mr. Soakash is unfortunately under the weather. And, and I think with the discussion we've had here. The best thing we could probably do as a council is to ask for Mr. Soakash to. Update his report. And in that updated report, include references to, um, the, 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 the plan that, uh. Mr. Santoro has offered to him, the suggestions there and. Um, a confirmation from the six landowners of their. Opinion. Or, or feelings about that, until the, the discussion go forward. I mean. What I'm hearing, Mr. Santoro from council, is that we're willing to work with you. Um, but at this point, I don't think we're in a decision stage.
I agree and I wanna thank you. And I'll add something to it. As I mentioned, I'm a, I'm a civil engineer, municipal engineer. I'm prepared to provide my services. Which I have done with my neighbors. Okay, and it was an education process as well.
Okay.
And with Mr. Soak, hats, because he's an operation manager. And I think we can get where you want to get.
Good.
Informally, as Mr. Pittfield has identified, we can. So, thank you.
But let's try it informally first. Uh, Counselor Douglas, followed by Counselor Hazelton. I think your hands are raised anew.
Uh, thank you for that. I, I think you're right, uh, Miracuzzi. We're missing, um, Mr. Soakash's input here and that's. That's quite an important part of it. But I'm just, in, in terms of, of going forward, I'm. I would be, um. I think it would be a very good idea to formalize that meeting with, uh, the neighbors to make sure that. Everybody's at the table at the same time to have that conversation, uh, albeit informal, but then you have everyone present. Uh, rather than individual, so there's no, um. There's no misunderstanding. Um, I think that's, but I think it's a very, very good idea. That, uh, we, you know, start with an informal way of doing this before we go to a more costly. And, uh, more intense. So, resolution, because maybe it is quite simple, as Mr. Santoro said. But anyways, thank you for all your comments, Mr. Santoro. Um, that's greatly appreciated. It, it gives a little bit more clarity of the situation for me.
Thank you. Counselor Hazelton.
Uh, thank, thank you. I would, um, just ask that, uh. We ask, um, Brad to include. A, um, a larger, um, view map. Of Haskett's Road so that we can see where on the road it is. Uh, I've been, um. Desperately, uh, searching for where this could possibly be using, uh, the district and township maps and, uh. I can't find it anywhere, so, um. The lack of perspective is concerning, but, um, perhaps we could ask Brad to include that larger perspective so that we know where it is. Thanks.
That was good. Um. Mr. Mariotti. What do you need from council at this point? Do you need a resolution or you, you got the drift of the conversation?
We get, uh, we, we absolutely get the drift. Uh, it's, it's a real shame that Mr. Soakash wasn't, uh, wasn't here. So, uh, we'll, we'll come back. Uh, I'm sure Mr. Soakash will be reviewing this, this tape. And, uh, and, and he, it's very clear as to, uh, the next steps.
Yeah, so then our final is Mr. Soakash, get well soon. Did you get that, Brad? All right, well, Mr. Santoro, thank you very much for your, for all your time and your input. And, um, I'm hopeful that we'll get discussions going in the not-too-distant future. And, and that, uh. We, that council will be updated with a report. And fingers crossed, the report will say, we know the solution. Here's, here's what we need to do and this is council's role, sorry, township's role and we're done.
I wanna thank you on behalf of the six of us because we are talking as one. And we will look forward to that discussion formally or otherwise. Uh, with, with Brad. And we'll get, um, I, I'm sure we'll find a, a solution that, that works for the township. And you'll be pleased.
All right, thank you very much. All right, council. Um, are we ready for the, the, the second topic of Committee of the Whole for the, the, this afternoon? Ms. Way, you need something from us.
I do, please. Can you please formally defer the motion? I would really appreciate that.
So do you want me to read the motion and all in favor of deferral?
Yes, please.
Okay, I have moved by Counselor Cooper, second by Counselor Douglas. It resolved, the Committee of the Whole recommended council direct staff to proceed with option one. Take no action and recommend that the complainant independently pursue options pursuant to the Drainage Act to address drainage issues. Either through a petition or a mutual agreement. All those in favor of deferral, please raise your hand. And that is, do I say carried as a deferral? That is deferred. Thank you very much. And now we get to go to talking about, um. Shore road allowances, I believe. Thank you very much, Mr. Pickfield. You're not part of the next piece, I gather.
I am not.
Lucky you. All right. Shore road allowances. And we're gonna start with a presentation?
Uh, that is correct. I'm just going to share my screen. There are so many of them, so hopefully we get the right one going here. Can you full, see the full, um?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. So. Um, as you know, the policy review, uh, has been conducted at the request of council. Over the past year, there have been two recurring items of greater concern. Which are the use of the high watermark and reference plans. And the equity in the purchase price for the road, the shore road allowances. Uh, Ms. Lebec and I have undertaken review the entire policy to evaluate legal requirements, best practices, and what is the best for the township of Georgian Bay. The draft policy, which is attachment two, starting on page fifteen of our report. Has been updated to address concerns and inclusion of practices that were not previously captured. The majority of this presentation will focus on the shore road allowances and will highlight the information addressing the proposed changes. Regarding the high watermark and the impact of riparian rights and the proposed changes to the fee structure. So how did we get to all these road allowances and more specifically the shore road allowances get here? So very, uh, high level. As Ontario was beginning to become more populated, a group of people had an idea, uh, that it would be best to create a grid. As Ontario was beginning to become more populated, a group of people had an idea, uh, that it would be best to create a grid of road allowances across the province, many which are current day concession lines. In addition to this, all waterfront properties were mapped with shore road allowances to ensure the passage of goods and people. The geography in Ontario was already mapped out at that time. And in the development of these road allowances and shore road allowances, lines were drawn to the sixty-six foot width. Regardless of what our landscape or water levels were, or for the fact that water levels may change, uh, the person tasked to do this who held the ruler and pencil in their hand, ready to mark the paper likely never stepped foot on the shores of Georgian Bay or any other waterway in the Muskogus for that matter. Unfortunately, this has left Georgian Bay and many other municipalities with questionably marked shore road and road allowances that do not reflect today's landscape. So where does this leave us with SRAs? So originally all the shore roads were owned by the Crown and like many things passed down from the province to local governments, so was the ownership of SRAs. As we all know, neither the municipality nor individuals can own anything under the water, and this is by right owned by the upper levels of government. We also know that water is an entity of its own that ebbs and flows as water levels fluctuate going up and down on the land. Because of this, in Ontario and many other jurisdictions, we have what is known as repair and rights. So simply put, this means that as the water levels go up and down, so does the ownership of the water. So does the ownership below and above the water. The line resides with the water's edge. So noting none of the images in my presentation are to scale in any capacity, but this, um, depicts the shore road allowance at a depth of sixty-six feet in green with the upland property in yellow and the body of water in blue below. So in the event of low water, a gap is created between the edge of the original shore road allowance and the edge of the water in this situation where parian rights come into play. And the owner of the shore road allowance, in fact, then owns the edge of the water as depicted here, the section of the land grows broader. When there is high water, the owner of the road, shore road allowance still only owns to the water's edge regardless of where the sixty-six feet come to. As shown here, the portion of the SRA contained above water is all that remains to be owned and is in fact narrower than the sixty-six feet. When selling land in Ontario, specifically a shore road allowance, a reference plan is required to be filed at the land registry office. This reference plan must show the specific part of land to be conveyed from the municipality to the upland owner. And the land conveyed can only be above the water's edge. At that point of selling the land, repairing rights will continue to be at play as the water levels fluctuate. In the event, the water's edge is below the sixty-six feet at the original shore road allowance, the municipality cannot charge a purchase fee for land beyond that, even if it is captured on the reference plan as a portion being conveyed. In the event, the water's edge is above the sixty-six feet of the original shore road allowance, the municipality can only charge the water's edge as shown on the reference plan. For example, this may mean only charging for forty feet of the original shore road allowance. Again, we recognize that water levels fluctuate and Ontario land surveyors are also very aware of this. It is their profession to understand that inland lakes, either uncontrolled or uncontrolled bodies of water and those uncontrolled bodies such as the Great Lakes, since there are four of them within the Ontario boundaries, which clearly has an impact on Georgian Bay. When drawing surveys or reference plans, water level patterns, historical data, and the type of body of water are all taken into consideration when drawing the line to the water's edge. Further, there is historical mapping available for them to determine the lines of the original shore road allowance. Given that, there are many times within the history of the township selling SRAs that there have been a disparity in cost depending on the body of water, water levels and age of reference plan as we were calculating the purchase price based off meter squared. This disparity is something we are addressing in the draft policy with the introduction of selling SRAs per linear meter. It is important to note that even though disparity may have been best practice, for best practices, the township conducted themselves in a legal manner and followed all legislative requirements. So to further clarify, if the SRA is above the water, the township has the right to sell the land. If the SRA is below the water, the township cannot sell the land or the flooded SRA for that matter. Since repair and rights come into play with waterfront properties and with the format in which reference plans are prepared based off the high watermark when surveyed, the one seventy-seven point four meter elevation is not required to the process of buying and selling of land. The one seventy-seven point four meter elevation on Georgian Bay is very valuable for development of property, but noting a high watermark is not relevant when it comes to the buying and selling of land, which is why the portion of the SRA to be conveyed is not calculated based off this land, nor is it illegally required to be noted on the reference plan. Time and time again, staff and legal counsel have had to address concerns of surveyors when preparing reference plans for properties of Georgian Bay because our current policy notes the one seventy-seven point four elevation. And, and this amount is not where the water's edge is to be measured and using this line goes against their professional standards. When calculating per square meter, it encompasses the entire frontage of the shore road as well as the full depth of the shore road. This means that as the water levels may be higher or lower, the number of square meters charged may have increased or decreased. When calculating by linear meter, the number of meters wide the shore road allowance is, is then times by the price per meter. This means that regardless of whether the sixty-six feet of the shore road or ninety feet or forty feet in depth, the purchase price is consistent based off the frontage. So currently the township charges $12 per square meter. The first thing to note is that sixty-six feet is equal to twenty point eleven meters. For example, if we are selling an SRA that is a hundred meters long by twenty point eleven meters wide, that would equal a total of two thousand eleven meters. This is then multiplied by twelve per square meter totaling a purchase price of twenty-four thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars plus HST. Knowing the sixty-six feet is equal to twenty point eleven meters, that means at $12 per meter, the total linear cost of the current fee is two hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. Moving forward, we are suggesting we round this up to two hundred and forty-two per linear meter. For example, under the proposed fee structure, the SRA with a hundred meter frontage is then multiplied by two hundred and forty-two, totaling a purchase price of twenty-four thousand two hundred plus HST. The linear meter would be measured in a similar manner that planning measures frontage. As noted previously, staff are recommending the township updates the policy and amends the fees and charges by law to charge two hundred and forty-two dollars per linear meter for the sale of shore road allowances. The sale of road allowances would continue to be eight dollars per square meter as that is what has been deemed practicable. Again, we are recommending the removal of the reference to the hundred and seventy-seven point four meter elevation within this policy and is not relevant for the buying and selling of land and is causing more confusion to the process. The one seventy-seven point four elevation will continue to play a huge part within the township's development services. If a surveyor chooses to make note of one seventy-seven point four in addition to the requirements per the land registry office, those reference plans will be accepted, however, will not be a requirement per our policy. Ontario land surveyors, real estate, legal counsel and the land registry office are familiar with the role repair and rights have within Ontario and by extension or jurisdiction. And this covers the water ebbing and flowing. To ensure the potential caveats of an application or specific property are identified and addressed prior to the public meeting, all applications will be circulated to planning, building, operations and finance for review and comment. We are recommending a thirty-day public notice period, which is increased from twenty days. This is to match the circulation timeframes to that of the township's planning notices. To ensure the most accurate part is to be conveyed is captured on a reference plan. It is being recommended that a reference plan be prepared within two years of the application date. If the majority of applications received, a reference plan is prepared at that time because it needs to capture the part to be conveyed, and this is not done on a typical survey. However, if a recent survey has been prepared, the same surveyor can work within the legwork they have already conducted on the property to capture the shore road allowance or road allowance. Just to note again, apart from the reference plan I just spoke to, the road allowance process would remain the same within our policy. So it is clear that provincial regulations dictate how a municipality may sell their shore road allowances and road allowances. Staff have been advised that our municipal policy on the matter should capture only items of our authority and our administrative processes. And for example, omit Odom items of provincial law. If the recommended changes to the policy are agreeable to committee, then the final version will be brought forward at the December council meeting under the consent agenda for approval. And an updated schedule to the fees and charges by the will also be brought forward at that time for approval. Additionally, we do acknowledge, uh, that it may not be possible to capture every exception to the rule when drafting municipal policy. However, in this circumstance, the township has legal counsel to advise on such matters. Being said, Sydney and I would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have on the proposed changes.
Well, thank you very much for that, uh, that report and, and your recommendations. I think they're well worth considering and I see already two councillors have a few questions and we're going to start with councillor Hazelton, please.
Uh, thank you Karen and Sydney for your, uh, report. I, I have a couple of questions that I would like to, uh, just try to better understand. When you talk about the, uh, the width of the lot from which you measure, uh, that linear distance for SRA, is that the lot, call it behind the land side of the SRA?
It would be the top line where the SRA meets the property.
Perfect, perfect. Thank you for that. Um.
Like I said, my images weren't to scale.
No, no, that's fine. Um. So, given that, uh, it was me who started this mess after twenty nineteen, um, I will first tell you what I observed and why I felt that it needed to be one seventy-seven four. And our planning gurus, I'm sure if Jen is here, she will tell me that, uh, no land, uh, sorry, that the, um, one seventy-seven four is a magic number from a planning standpoint. But that is not how planning acted back in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. And so, um, I felt that we had to make a change because planning wasn't doing their job properly. Um, clearly that's the case that we now know, but, um, that was the case back then. Um, and so, uh, my reason for introducing the one seventy-seven four number was, um, I didn't want to have any silly games being played from a planning and a development standpoint because of people going out and buying their SRA and all of a sudden having a lot that was one and a half acres when previously it was only point eight acres. Um, so that was the motivation. Um, we've debated, argued, discussed this topic for a while. What I think I hear you saying is, um, if we take the linear dimension, we really, we re- and, and we have a factor of charging them something, uh, for the twenty meters sixty-six feet. And it really doesn't matter where the high watermark is, where the watermark is. Um, the, uh, the, the, the essence is that the property owner will own their SRA, whatever that is. And some days it might be one meter and other days it might be sixty meters. Um, and, uh, I'm okay with all of that. I, I don't have a problem with it. My concern, uh, was, as I've already stated, I have one other concern I would ask you to help me clarify, and that is if, uh, and, and my property is probably one of the most, uh, illustrative properties for any of this because I have extremely shallow, um, uh, shoreline. And when we have low water, I've got seventy-five feet of, uh, of beach prior to to my cottage and in high water I have, uh, you know, ten feet of beach or ten feet of space. Um, but my cottage is built on the shore road allowance.
Yes.
And so when it comes to, um, ownership, uh, the first thing I had to do when I bought it was I had to ensure for the bank purposes that I owned the land on which the cottage was built. And if I understand what you've told us, your formula allows for that ownership. In other words, there will never be a gap. Uh, there would never will be a, a way in which, uh, half my cottage is on the lot that was originally defined and half which what was on the shore of the allowance, there will never be a way that, uh, that shore allowance is, is not in my name. And therefore that property will always be, um, kind of safe from a, a banking and from an insurance perspective.
Yes.
So I, I see you nodding your head. So wonderful. Um, one, one other point, uh, that I would like to offer. The township of the Archipelago charges two dollars uh, per linear meter or square meter or whatever. Um, we charge twelve. Um, I think that we are, um, out of line and in our numbers, I would like to see it uh, way less than that, maybe four dollars, two dollars, whatever. We're covering our costs and we're in a situation where we are essentially telling anybody who has buildings on the SRA that they don't own, that they first have to mortgage their, uh, their, their kids', uh, education to buy the SRA before they can then fix a dock. And I think that's an inappropriate way of dealing with our residents. So I would like to suggest that we revisit that number. Um, but otherwise I thank you very much for an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Boy, I thought I exaggerated sometimes. Clerk, wait.
Um, if I may respond to councillor Hazelton, your worship, I would, I would just like to thank you for the, the time and that you did take to answer some of those questions and explaining the history that occurred. Obviously Sydney and myself were not here prior to the current policy being implemented. And understanding the rationale certainly helps us go a long way and, um, I can definitely attest to the fact that Sydney and I often speak with planning applicant, planning staff on applications moving forward now. Um, whenever there's anything that comes up involving an SRA. Um, I just would like to ask a question of clarification when it comes to the cost. I believe it was in twenty twenty-one that we did up the fee to $12 per square meter. Um, obviously the calculation is taking that fee and running it lengthwise. If we were to reduce it, which is fine by me, um, would you want it to be back on par with the road allowance? Which is eight dollars per square meter, like that kind of equivalency, or would you want both of those fees to be reduced in a manner that would be affordable? Or do you want SRAs to be treated separately? Sorry, this is kind of slightly off and just trying to get some clarification on where.
I, I really like your, your linear approach as opposed to the square area approach. Um, and, um, I think that, uh, what I would like to see is a focus on simplicity for our, uh, residents. And if we are taking the position, another debate that we've had, uh, about, uh, whether we should be charging for, uh, or making people buy the SRA when they have a dock or something, um, that's for perhaps another time. But if we assume that that's not changing today, um, keeping it simple for our, uh, residents so that we're not bankrupting them when they just want to fix their dock. Um, I, I think that's a, that's an appropriate strategy. Uh, and I would very much be in favor of, uh, a dramatic reduction. Uh, road allowances, I think are a different story. We're not forcing people to buy a road allowance, uh, to put a, to fix their dock.
Right.
So we, we, and water access properties must be able to get to our properties, must, must have uh, structures on the shoreline. If we don't yet on the SRA, we should be scrambling to figure out how to buy it as fast as possible. And, uh, changing the, the price, uh, will, would certainly reflect, uh, a focus on sensitivity to the customer. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillor Cooper.
Thank you, Mary Cuzzi, and thank you Karen for your report. Um, I think I've provided you with a little bit of information, um, in terms of, uh, where I sit on this, but at ten, uh, ten thousand feet. Um, I do like the idea in your report, and it's really the key piece, is a straight line, uh, notional line, shall we say, um, and box. Basically it's a rectangle of sixty-six feet by whatever that shoreline is. Um, and so I like that concept because it's very simple. And I think it particularly is effective when we are talking about, uh, controlled butter, wat- water bodies or uncontrolled water bodies on inland lakes and rivers, et cetera. I think it's very sensible and the reason I say that is I think it's very sensible, and the reason I say that is, and I think councillor Bianco has pointed out in the past, that uh the controlled water bodies are, there's virtually no change at the waterfront. So there's no question about where the road allowance is or isn't, for the most part. Even on lakes where there's spring flooding, which we don't have in Georgian Bay, we don't have flooding. Although I heard that from a planner today. Um, there there is not any uh flooding there. Uh but so we need to remember that there'll be other places like Gibson Lake, for example, as I understand it floods sometimes, and so if you went out and measured the shore road allowance uh in Gibson Lake uh during the flood times in April, uh you might get a very different picture as to where the shoreline is. But for the most of the year, as I understand it, according to councillor Wianco, that lake is um, you know, more or less within a foot or two uh of uh having a consistent shoreline. That does not apply to Georgian Bay, and that's sort of where I vary slightly with this solution. I think we can use the solution. I don't see any reason uh for for using anything other than the high watermark, because that will be just like we're treating the inland lakes. We we have some sort of credibility around having a ref- reference point, a very specific reference point. So if we have that specific reference point, we could use your methodology and go back the sixty six feet. Uh, as frankly, we've been doing for some time, it's just that we're creating a rectangle as opposed to something that follows a bit of a back and forth. So uh that's sort of where I'd like to see this go. I've um provided a lot more information than that. I have consulted uh with surveyors, I have consulted with um uh other uh experts, including uh very, very experienced uh planners and planning consultants, et cetera. I've even consulted with the um our former clerk about this and why we were practicing the way we were um over the years and uh I think the sensible approach and and very understandable approach is having that that sort of reference point, the high watermark. So I I am very much in favor of that. Uh, I would also say that the experts that I've spoken to, every one of them is from Georgian Bay. The experts that we are referencing in this report, to my knowledge, are not from Georgian Bay. Uh, some of the surveyor, for example, I believe is from Aurelia and probably very familiar with um you know, Lake Kuchiche and Lake Simcoe, et cetera, but that isn't Georgian Bay and the s- seven foot swing is not prevalent there at all. And when I say a seven foot swing, by the way, that really is just a height measurement. It doesn't, it doesn't reference what could really happen, which is a huge movement of the waterfront. Uh, if you have a low slope, we're talking up to a hundred plus feet uh for a change in terms of uh location. And the other issue I run into on this is I'm quite concerned. Uh, and I don't see this in the report where we've had direct consultation with the province as to uh selling land under the water, which, as I understand, land under the water is crown land. And the 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 only way to measure under the water, uh as far as I'm concerned, and others uh on Georgian Bay is under the high watermark. Otherwise, the line's moving all over the map. And so what what does the province own or not pr- own? So there's one question that I think needs to be uh addressed very directly, and I'd like to see uh, you know, some evidence of that. Um, I I think it's also, there's a couple of other things I'd like to sort of add to this, and that is um I um, given this is a pretty impactful thing for our township and given it's the uh almost the dead of winter and everybody's gone home. I um I'm uncomfortable about um passing this today. Um, furthermore, I'd like to hear from our new councillors uh as to their thoughts around something like this. So I'm uncomfortable with with the going ahead with this. I think we're getting there and I'm, I thank you very much for the work that you've done because I think we are getting there. I just don't know that we're fully there and I I would frankly like to uh hear from from our new councillors when they are elected and or are in place. So that's one other piece that I wanted to add. Thank you.
I'd say councillor Cooper, you're in luck because this is committed to hold and this won't be in front of council until the new council is sitting, so they will get that opportunity.
But they won't be able to give their input to to a resolu- I mean, there'll be a a input for a final resolution and is and I and I'm asking that there'd be more discussion about this because it's a very contentious issue, and I think we're really getting there, but we're not totally there yet, and I think we would be wise to consult with our new players. So that's why I said what I said. Thank you.
Clerk way.
Thank you, Rashit, councillor Cooper. Um, I did receive the information that you sent uh through on this policy, so thank you very much. Um, it's always nice to hear a different perspective and I understand the concerns of council and our residents, especially when we're drafting policies that impact everybody. In regards to the one seventy seven point four, I very much understand that the water fluctuates vastly in Georgian Bay and there is much more or not much more, many more triggers that may impact that water level moving up and down, especially compared to those of our inland lakes, especially even more can against the, you know, the controlled waterways that we do have. The concern, and this is something that I understand why the one seventy seven point four was initially brought up, but the issue was, and it wasn't consulted with surveyors at the time, is the fact that we can't actually measure an SRA based off the one seventy seven point four. Uh, shore road allowance is a fixed location that has been edged out hundred plus years ago, give or take circa nineteen hundred, depending on when our air was specifically mapped. Uh, whereas the one seventy seven point four is dependent on our current water levels um and the current makeup and landscape that we are in today, which is vastly important when we're dealing with development. Um, the shore road taking into account for the overall size of a property, the waterfrontage especially, but it's not relevant when it comes to identifying the specific location of the SRA. Um, so the one seventy seven point four could be in the middle of the SRA, it could be above it, it could be below it. Um, so we can't measure the sixty six feet from that point, and this is an issue we have been running into with the surveyors and legal counsel um in the past year or so with this policy, um because they cannot measure it from that one seventy seven point four. I do agree that it's relevant information and perhaps having that line noted on the reference plan within Georgian Bay um SRAs would be relevant, and maybe that's a compromise we can have in the policies to have um and noted that that line must be recorded. Um, but that and but knowing that the SRA cannot be measured based off of that line, as long as that is delineated, that's fine. Additionally, um we haven't reached out to the province to ask about selling land because we don't sell land that's below the water line. We cannot sell land that's below the water. Um, that's one reason why we want to ensure that the reference plans are current. Um, I think it was a few months ago, Sydney received an application, the reference plan was thirty years old. Um, and maybe the water levels have ebbed and flowed so many times that they're back to where they were then. Um, but we want to ensure that the information coming before council, especially when it is talking about conveying land is current um and up to date, and so we don't want to risk having something that's so outdated. Um, but again, um surveyors look to the history pattern of of the area, knowing, you know, that Gibson Lake, for example, is floods every spring kind of thing and maybe goes up. Um, they'll know that those are weather patterns that happen. They study the historical data when it comes to drawing that bottom line of the high watermark. But again, the SRA is an matched location. The high watermark really only comes into play if it is within the sixty six feet of the shore road, in which case the the parcel noted on the reference plan might not be that full depth of the sixty six feet.
Thank you. Councillor Yanko.
Yeah, I think this is the twenty year uh calculation. It's a great solution for um so the SRAs in in Georgian Bay. I'm just wondering about the inland lakes. I know when I bought my prop, my road allowance back in the early nineties, uh when they went to survey it, they found half of my road allowance, my sixty six feet was half it was underwater and I and on Six Mile Lake, we got a fixed uh water level, plus minus three inches in the summertime. So when I went to buy it, I only had to pay like thirty some feet back from the uh the normal water. In this case, now, if I went to buy it again, would I be paying sixty six feet back from the water?
Uh, in a roundabout way, yes, the the amount, the two forty two that I'm proposing is based off of a full depth. And again, as councillor Hazelton suggested, maybe that amount is too high. I just based it off what if if someone had to pay for that full sixty six feet today and I equated it linear across, that would be the value. Um, but there seems to be concerns about the price being too high, this um which is completely fine, and that's something that we can address. But
Yeah, you may.
Finding it underwater is coming. Sorry.
We may have some pushback on that because I think people can still prove that uh the the part of their road allowance is under the under the water, and I think uh councillor Douglas may be able to help me out here, but I understand on Go Home Lake, a lot of their road allowances are underwater, but there may only be few feet or ten feet or whatever, where their dock is maybe road allowance, and I would hate to think that they got to buy sixty six feet back when they only have really usable uh ten feet. So I think there has to be some consideration there um uh on that. So maybe councillor Douglas, maybe I'll outline that more, but I know on Six Mile, we were flooded lake. So um some of our road allowances got flooded and that's where they are right now.
I can, if I can just speak up on that, I I Go Home Lake is also a flooded lake. And yes, there will be quite a few of the properties that will be underwater with the road shore shore road allowance, for sure. So.
Which begs a very interesting legal question. If your shore road allowance is entirely underwater, then presumably your parion rights doesn't really cut in there because if your shoreline is already owned on your deed, you probably have no interest to buy that shore road allowance.
Correct.
Councillor Jarvis, please.
Yeah, no, I need to buy it. I I admit to uh when reading the port, almost having my brain blow up, so I really appreciate Karen's explanation uh and presentation today. It helped me a lot. Um uh, cause I was really, I I've been struggling for quite a while now with this idea of what constitutes shore allowance on a on a body of water where you have water fluctuations of as has already been mentioned, seven feet, but basically two mi- two two meters anyway, is what we've seen. I would um venture to suggest that in nineteen ninety six, water levels were on their way down from the highs of eighty six and probably were where they are now. So actually, probably pretty accurate. If that helps Sydney in any way. So I I'm with councillor Hazelton. I'm liking the way we're sort of moving this whole thing. Uh, the concept of linear calculation makes a heck of a lot more sense because it removes this level of fluctuation of water levels and and that's that's very reasonable, particularly in the Georgian Bay. Having just heard what councillor Wianco and Douglas have contributed, I think we've got to consider how that affects those waterways where there isn't the fluctuation that we get in the Georgian Bay, and maybe we need a slightly more nuanced approach. And and finally, I think um I know that our current CEO was with um the Archipelago not so long ago, and perhaps he can uh provide some uh information on how the Archipelago handles SRAs, because I am curious to know uh how that how that works up there.
CEO Mariotti.
Well, um I wasn't really involved in shore road allowance allowances uh at the Archipelago. Um, but I I do know that councillor Hazelton did did talk to uh my previous ops admin person. What I do know is that uh shore road allowance files went through very quickly at the Archipelago. So we didn't spend hours and hours uh discussing them and which is why, you know, I mean, great job, but kudos to Karen and Sydney and Christine for for introducing this novel um method of of a linear calculation. And and by reducing the cost per linear meter as per councillor Hazelton's suggestion, that would also help to um, you know, take care of those properties who have submerged shore allowances because the the cost will be you know, will will be relatively minor. Um, I I think the beauty of this is it doesn't matter what height your water's edge is. Once you purchase this this linear calculation of a shore road allowance, you could have two meters of uh of uh, you know, of of water body uh or or dry land, or you could have a hundred meters of dry land. At this point, who cares? You own the shore road allowance. It's pretty simple.
Yeah, I I'm and I'm finding myself in agreement. I think maybe though to allow for the inland lake portion of things and probably to encourage more people to purchase their shore allowances and get them off our books, maybe lowering the cost is not a bad idea.
Thank you. I did do add a a few additional comments. I I think the solution is that selling shore road allowances by the linear measure is a is a good and slick one. I think, you know, sometimes we're forgetting the fact that on many of these properties, the shore road allowance was attached to that property uh or designated on that property a hundred plus years ago. And that when you bought your property uh in in many cases, you you knew exactly where your property ended and the shore road allowance began. Because that was surveyed, whether it was surveyed well or poorly, in high or low water, it was still surveyed. And your 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 property is registered in Bracebridge with that shore road allowance showing on it. And and that in in most cases, that would be sixty six feet out from the end of your property. And I, and and all those surveys that I'm aware of in Bracebridge, the water level wasn't necessarily designated, or it just said to water's edge. But a hundred years ago, that was presumed you know, by whoever did that survey. So I I think, I don't think there should be any dispute about where the, let me call it the dry side of the shore road allowance is because that's designated on a survey, whether it was done well or poorly, it's there. That's a given. And so we are suggesting that we're, we were given the right by the province to tell, to sell the land between that line and the water. And given all this fluctuation, but also in water levels, but also given the riparian rights, once we've sold that shore road allowance and it's designated as such in Bracebridge, then you own your land down to the water. I don't think we, I think by adding things like high water marks or, you know, flooded lands uh in in the spring, or the fact that many of our inland lakes actually have a lower water level come November or December than they do during the summer, is just complicating things, but I think everybody sort of understands. You bought your shore road allowance, you own your land down to the water, wherever it is at that moment, and I I I don't think we have to make it more complicated. I think in a separate debate, which perhaps we should not do today, but ask staff to do a little more research on is the the cost. It it is our shore road allowance outrageously expensive compared to many of our neighbors, or is it in line? Or what? I have no idea. And I think that'd be interesting information, which I I believe councillors should know before we debate whether or not the two forty two is the right amount, or maybe we'll sell for a hundred dollars. I don't know. But I I think have, knowing what some of our neighbors are doing would be very helpful information on that. With that, I see some interest in round two, even though I'm not sure councillor Douglas actually had round one, so I'm gonna let councillor Douglas go first and then go to councillors Hazelton and Jarvis, because I don't, you didn't really speak to the round one councillor Douglas, other than to respond to uh the I think a councillor Wianco question.
Yes, thank you for that. I I just wanted to uh thank um the staff for putting together this report. I'm sure it was a long, arduous job. And um to say that I think the methodology behind this with the linear is good idea. And I also think that um councillor Hazelton brings up a very good point on uh cost factor for the inland lakes, especially, I think uh as I will not be here to debate this with you. I'll put my two cents worth in. I think if you reduce the price, you will get more people um looking at buying that shore road allowance and taking advantage of that, and that could solve a few problems with the building and so on. So thank you very much for that.
So we understand your opening bid is two cents per linear meter?
Well, I'll leave that up to the new council to debate.
Thank you. Councillor Cooper, please.
Well, thank you for recognizing me. My hand was up first.
I did you, if you had paid attention, you would have noted that I noted that Counsel Douglas had not spoken in the first round. That's why I asked you to wait until Counsel Douglas spoke.
Thank you. And moving on, um, just wanted to say that uh, a couple of things. One is that the, it's been noted here that, or there's a impression here that shore road allowance is designated at a certain spot on a lot. And as I understand it, we are in the driver's seat when it comes to shore road allowance, where we choose to, excuse me, let me finish. And um, I understand that with the land registry, our former clerk made it very clear to me that we tell them what we are selling and where it is. We have every right to do that. So that being the case, I, I really am very confused why we can't use one seventy seven point four on Georgian Bay. Because we tell them where it is, this is what you're buying and be done with it. So um, you may have a different impression, but I'm, I'm told the land registry office responds to whatever the township tells them. Thank you.
I don't know where to start, Counsel Cooper. The, when people buy their property with shore road allowance, the shore road allowance upper edge is defined on the survey when they're buying that property. We, as township, can't say that line is wrong.
We tell the surveyor, the, the property edge on Georgian Bay is one seventy seven four.
Are you talking about the upper or lower edge?
The lower, the water's edge is one seventy seven four. And that's what we use for planning. Why are we confusing this? I just, it's completely bonkers.
In other words, you're, you're not agreeing with the linear foot approach?
Yes, I am.
Then I'm very confused.
Why? A straight line rectangle being sold at starting at one seventy seven four. Now that one seventy seven four, obviously if the land goes away in like this, just go straight across.
But what about the space between the one seventy seven four and the upper edge, the, of the road allowance as it was originally designated?
What about it? Sixty six feet back?
Clerk, wait.
Um, yes. The, the land registry office accepts the reference plans. However, they do have the right to reject the reference plans. Um, if they've deemed them to not be drawn appropriately or not to the appropriate Ontario Land Surveyors standards, um, they do have the right to say no. Um. In a casual aspect, yes, they accept that we are selling that portion of land or that part that is noted on the reference plan. They don't tell us what part we are choosing to sell. Um, but we don't get to arbitrarily make up where that line is. The dry side or the north side of the SRA is a fixed line. It may be above the water, it may be below the water, and that's why we have our parion rights. But that is a fixed line and the sixty six feet is drawn back from that line. It cannot be drawn from the one seventy seven point four.
We tell surveyors, we want to know where the high watermark is. We use it for planning. I'm what's, what?
Yes, but the high watermark is not the same as the line for the shore road allowance. They're not one in the same. They're not inclusive.
Well.
It may be the same in some circumstances, but it is not mutually inclusive to be the same line.
And what line is it then? You're telling me it moves all over the place. So I'm, I'm just simply saying it's a, a very fixed thing to do would be, say, on Georgian Bay, one seventy seven four. There's no guessing.
Your worship, if I may, sorry.
You may.
Um. The, the south side of that line, I'm gonna
The land side and the water side, perhaps?
Thank you. The land side and the water side. Thank you. Um, the land side of the SRA is a fixed line. The sixty six feet down from that is also a fixed line as they were originally surveyed circa nineteen hundred. We don't get to decide where those two lines are. Now, the only thing that can fluctuate as the water goes up and down is the water side. Because if, when these were originally drawn, the land side is a solid marked line and you go sixty six feet down, but if the water levels have come up three meters, that's not a full sixty six feet above the water. So now that water line gets drawn out on the reference plan. But that is not mutually inclusive to the one seventy seven point four. The one seventy seven point four could be up here. It could be down here. It could be here. But we can't use the one seventy seven four to draw the sixty six feet down or the thirty feet to the water, the forty feet to the water, or maybe even the ninety feet to the water if the water is really low. Because the landside line has been fixed by someone who maybe never stepped foot here, which is why half of them are completely underwater, such as Go Home Bay, or the bays have since been flooded. And if we start drawing the lines from a line that does not exist, the land registry office can reject our reference plans.
I'm sure they can. They haven't. And we for many years have been selling our shore road allowance with the one seventy seven four, my point. Sorry, uh, I, I see where this is going. I can, I can get it. Uh, everybody else is comfortable. But I think it's, uh, we, we have created ambiguity here on the, on Georgian Bay. Thank you.
Counsel Jarvis.
I will respectfully disagree with Counsel Cooper. I think we've uh, removed the ambiguity by, by making this idea that it's a linear calculation and I appreciate that. I, I, I would only add that um, based on, and agree, in agreement with Counsel Hazleton's comments, I think having uh, the one seventy seven four line as, as, as part of that information package that we get is just a, a nice point of reference from my perspective. Uh, I don't see it as something I'd use to do anything, but I like to have it when I'm seeing what's being bought, how it's being bought and how it, how it um, fits in with the one seventy seven four. Um, again, I do like the idea. I appreciate the report and um, the calculation makes a lot of sense to me. But I would like to see the one seventy seven four line in there just for reference. Thank you.
All right. Any further comments at this point? I have in front of me the motion that reads moved by Counsel Douglas, second of by Counsel Hazleton. The resolved committee hall receives clerk's report twenty twenty two dash twenty three regarding this draft shore road, road allowance policy. And that the updated shore road, road allowance policy be brought forward to council for approval. And that the fees and charges by law be updated to include the new fee structure for the sale of shore road allowances. All those in favor? All right, and that is clear.
All right, Mayor. Just for you, uh, I was trying to get myself off unmute. Um. So we have the last statement here that the fees and charges by law be updated to include the new fee structure. But we were talking about a change in the fee structure and I'm wondering when that new information gets inserted.
Ms. Way.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so instead of the fees and charges by law just being a bylaw listed on the December meeting, um. I will bring back a report. I'm just trying to think if it'll be part of the probably now, instead of having it under consent, the whole policy and the fee structure um, with a comparison of fees will be brought back in December and then we can discuss what is an appropriate fee structure, whether it's, you know, anywhere from like a dollar to a hundred dollars, whatever the case may be um, for that linear foot and council can make a decision on what's best for the community.
Thank you.
Another question?
Oh, sorry. Counsel Hazleton.
So um, sorry, I'm a little cloudy today. So um, I just wanted to verify one concept here. Um, and the concept that I think I understand is you have a surveyor go out and he figures out what the uh, where the water is and, and so on. We end up with a linear measurement. But essentially, as I am beginning, I think to understand is that the concept of a shore road allowance is more notional than um, black and white. In which case, the shore road allowance today, based on a high water in Georgian Bay, might be twenty feet. And tomorrow in Georgian Bay might be fifty feet. But we don't care down the road. All we care about is at one point in time, a surveyor came along and established a couple of lines. And then we, as a township, sell the SRA to that uh, property owner and that, that now becomes essentially a live uh, a, a, a live uh, shore road allowance that can increase and decrease depending on what the Georgian Bay water levels are. I see you nodding your head. So thank you. It's, that for me um, ma- makes the ambiguity go away. Uh, cause it's then saying it's more of a notional idea, but it has to be pinned down at one point in time from a registry standpoint. But uh, effectively, you're doing what I, I thought we wanted to do, which was ensure that that SRA is in front of a property and is always up to the edge of the water and all the repairing rates are all applicable. Um, and then all we have to do is come up with the right number on what it's costing and uh, I think that'll be good. Anyways, thank you. Sorry for interrupting the process, Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Jarvis, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I'm feeling Al's pain right now. Um. Having been through that, uh, yeah, and I'm finding myself agreeing too, but I just, based on what the comments from um, Counsel Wianco and Counsel Douglas, I think what we're gonna, if we were just to leave the uh, the costs the same per uh, uh, per linear as opposed to square, um, it sounds to me like we'd be gaining in income from the sale of shore road allowances on the inland lakes. And uh, and, and the bay would probably be status quo. And I think we've got to uh, make a correction to allow for the fact that we don't want to be overcharging the inland lakes for, for this type of thing. And, and Al's idea of, you know, bringing the cost down, I think would help alleviate significantly.
And then, and Ms. Way has promised us a report.
Yeah, which is great. Yeah.
All right. Can I flip the page over now? Okay, done. I don't believe we have any new business. But Counsel Douglas asked for a few moments before we go into the closing of the meetings. So Counsel Douglas, the, the floor is yours, so to speak.
Well, thank you for giving me the time to speak. Um, as this may be my last meeting, I'm not sure about the November third special meeting. I just want to take the opportunity, opportunity to say a few words here. Um, you know, this has been the most interesting and educational eight years. And uh, it has been my pleasure, my honor to represent the, our community and the uh, the township. And to work with the present and the past council. Uh, you know, for, you know, discussions and improving our township. I, I really appreciate to have that, those eight years to do that. Uh, I'd also like to uh, thank the staff. Um, they've diligently worked uh, to provide council with the information and for your support to help us make informed decisions. So thank you so much and I will certainly miss you all. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank my constituents for their support over the last eight years. Um, it's gone very quickly. I'm sad to be retiring, but it has been one of the most rewarding eight years, probably, I would say, in my life. I wish you all going forward, good luck and to the new counselors joining you as well. I will sadly miss debating with you, but I wish you all very good luck in the future. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And from all of us, the best to you. Yes. And look forward to seeing you, if not in official roles, now and then going forward.
Sure you'll see me and you might actually see me in the November meeting, but I just thought in case that wasn't possible, I would uh, say my goodbyes now and thank everyone.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, I move by Counsel Hazelton, second of by Counsel Jarvis. We have resolved a committee of hold downs does now adjourn at three oh five PM to reconvene on December thirteenth, twenty twenty two, worth the call of the chair. All those in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Good discussion and uh, see you again soon.